Test, test. Check, check. Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome. How's everybody doing today? All right, glad to see everybody here this afternoon. I'm gonna go ahead and call our workshop to order. This is the Flagler County Board of County Commissioners. It's Monday, April 7th, 2025. It is 1:02 PM. If everybody could please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, one God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
All right, thank you again. Appreciate everybody being here today. This is a time in our agendas where we take a moment of silence for individual prayer, reflection, or meditation. We take this time to honor and remember our first responders and the men and women in our military who keep us safe and protect our freedoms at home and abroad. All right, thank you again. Appreciate seeing a good crowd here today. Want to recognize this is a workshop. Our first item is for the Synergy Sports presentation. And I know we have some of our City of Palm Coast administrators, directors, people here. So thank you for being here. Appreciate it. County Administrator, who's gonna start us off?
I think Amy's gonna give an introduction of Jason from Synergy.
Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair and Commissioners. My name's Amy Lukosik, Tourism Development Director. Pleased to bring before you a project that has been in the works for quite some time now, between the county and the city of Palm Coast. I have the pleasure of introducing Jason Boudreaux, who's the founder and CEO of Synergy Sports, to provide you with a future sports complex in the western side. Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, everybody, and to the public and folks from the community that are here.
Just state your name for the record.
Jason Boudreaux, founder and CEO of Synergy Sports. It's good to see all of y'all again. As you know, we've been working with City of Palm Coast and Flagler County staff over the past couple of months to continue working through the, all of the details of the sports complex project on the western side of the Loop Road. So I wanted to come before you guys today to provide an update, share some additional information that staff and I have worked on, and then get some direction from you all on how you would like to proceed. Happy to answer any questions. Short presentation, and then we should be good to go. So real quick, just for background, we are a national sports consulting firm. We really specialize in creating these public-private partnerships. We work with about thirty or thirty-five municipalities across the country, as well as colleges, universities, and some nonprofits. And so we have about two or three dozen other sports projects in the works across the country that range, you know, from much smaller than this to much larger than this. So we have a lot of experience, a lot of expertise. We have some great partners. And we've really enjoyed working with Amy and county staff through this process. And so we have a number of other projects in the state of Florida that we're currently in development, or some of our partners are currently part of. And so I'm not gonna read through this slide. You guys can read. But from Lake County to Gainesville and Alachua County, across to Sebring, it kind of spans the spectrum of size of facility, acreage, and community that we're working with. So the Lake County project is still in conversation, kinda like what we are here. Sebring is a little bit further along. We've had presentations to County Commission and TDC. Alachua County is currently operating. It opened back in 2023. One of our operating partners currently operates that in partnership with their local sports tourism organization. In total, our operating partners have about twenty or twenty-five projects that are currently operating. And so we have a lot of experience and expertise and knowledge and data when we start building out financial models and use models of the types of groups that are able to use these. And we're a lot more accurate on a lot of the financial modeling. And so just to give some background, we were brought in originally by Palm Coast to take a look at some previous studies that they had done about the concept of a sports complex, refresh those studies, dust them off. They were during COVID, pre-COVID. What does that landscape look like now? And then, you know, what is the path forward? And so we looked at all of those things. We agreed with most of the recommendations. We made some adjustments once we were able to take a look at it. But the overarching concept was that an indoor facility, along with outdoor fields, could be both community use, quality of life, and could help drive sports tourism revenue, tax revenue, and economic impact as part of the westward expansion to the west of the Loop Road. And so through a public-private partnership, there is a pathway to develop this without the county, with any of the municipalities having to go out to bond or to overextend themselves. There is no taxes, tax increase through a public-private partnership. And so we wanted to make that abundantly clear. We did that in our first presentations to Palm Coast and as we've talked with and worked with county staff. Whoa. Holy cow. I just went really fast through that.
Good presentation. Thank you.
There we go. I rest my case. Okay, so this is the conceptual site plan. The road to, on the right of your screen, is the Loop Road. So this is west of that. This site plan kind of predates our involvement, but it is representative of the type of assets, fields, indoor facility. We'll get to kind of all of these pieces here in a second. But it's a collection of what we call flat fields. And so it's not just soccer. It's soccer, lacrosse, football, flag football, ultimate frisbee, rugby. You name it, anything that can be put onto a flat field. Number two is a stadium. Six is the flat fields. Number one is an indoor facility. So when we say indoor, a lot of times we'll reference courts. So if we say a ten-court facility or an eight-court facility, the benchmark there is a basketball court. So everybody kinda has an idea of how big of a basketball court is, rather than saying one hundred and fifty or two hundred thousand square feet. But this gives you kind of a visual of what the site could look like, would look like. Certainly, there are wetlands that we'll work around as we kind of develop this further. And so on the indoor side, right, the recommendation was ten full-size courts, which translates into twenty-four full-size volleyball courts, thirty to thirty-six pickleball courts. It can accommodate a two-hundred-meter indoor track. Currently, there's only one publicly available track in the state of Florida. It gives you the ability to host these big tournaments, but it also gives you the ability to do community-centric types of things. You can host high school graduations here, right? It's floor space. You can, concerts, corporate events, conferences, conventions, trade shows, meetings, non-sport events can all be put here. It's not just a basketball facility. Additionally, there's hospitality spaces, so physical therapy, medical rehab, a fitness space for the community, restaurants, other leasable spaces, family entertainment, places for kids to go. All are encapsulated within this indoor facility. On the outdoor side of things, twenty flat fields, which are FIFA regulation, which is an international soccer certification. Sixteen of those are turf fields. Four of them are grass fields. They all would have lights. They would all have bleachers, scoreboards. So you get this kind of upper, top-tier feel of this facility. The stadium would be grass. It'll seat twenty-five hundred to thirty-five hundred people. Again, lights, scoreboard, press box. And so that is your championship field. It's also, you know, can be used for other sports besides soccer. Throughout the site, throughout the outdoor piece of the project, multiple concession stands, restroom buildings. We want to design this with some intentionality, right? I don't know how many of you have kids, grandkids, that play travel sports, travel competitive sports. But the worst thing in the world is going out to a soccer tournament, and it's just grass and nothing else, right? So having shade structures, having playgrounds, having places for kids to go, and, you know, safety netting and that sort of thing. Again, all with intentionality, not just building a big grass field where, you know, mom and dad will set up their chairs, and there's not really anything to do there. So we've reached out. Part of the direction that we were given from county staff was to go ahead and start reaching out to groups who may be interested. And so included in your packets and your print-offs, there are letters of intent, letters of interest, from a majority of these groups and organizations that are on your screen. Those that didn't submit a letter of intent or interest have verbally said that they are interested in bringing events and tournaments to a potential Flagler County sports complex. And as we sit here today, just with these groups, and these are just the ones within arms' reach of us, we probably have about a half-a-year calendar already full. And so we wanted to, again, not just build something for the sake of building it and hope people will come, right? We wanted to have commitments. We wanted to have groups on board that see the value in this. And so the other thing that we were tasked to do was to get a better idea of what the potential is for naming rights, sponsorships for a facility here. And so one of our partners, who specializes in naming rights, believes that there is a reasonable thirty to thirty-five million dollars worth of naming rights sponsorships available for the sports complex, right? And so that doesn't include your local advertisers, your community businesses. These are our local, regional, national businesses and organizations that want to put their name on something, put their name on a field, put their name on a court, put their name on an entire complex. And so we have different categories that we'll be building out if we're directed to do so. And so we will define these by medical or healthcare sponsors, financial partners, infrastructure partners. And so we'll get a much better idea of where a lot of this support is coming from. And so as we've explained to Palm Coast initially, and then working with county staff, there are generally four ways that these projects are funded. And again, I'm not gonna read through all of these, but, you know, public entities can issue bonds. They can put it into a capital improvement plan. They can work with a private developer to develop these projects privately. Or there's this public-private partnership concept. And so for all of the reasons that you guys can read, you know, the one that we want to focus on is this public-private partnership. And so it allows the public side to leverage private capital without having to go out to bond, without having to raise residents' taxes. We can combine resources. The private side is really good at building things. The private side is really efficient at building things. The public side is really good at mobilization. The private side, or the public side is really good at a lot of things from infrastructure to a lot of the tourism and sports side of things. It presents the least risk for the municipality, which is why we, this is the model that we generally subscribe to. And of those original thirty-ish projects that I mentioned early on that we have in progress around the country, twenty-five, twenty-six of them are following this same model. And so this is a model that's been introduced about three years ago. Before that, this same model was used in other areas of government life, public infrastructure. This model is used quite often. And so how does it work? You know, I'm not gonna read through all of this. But in a nutshell, the private side works with the public side to acquire the land. We develop it privately, and then we turn around and we enter into a municipal agreement with the county to help support the overall project. The county maintains control of how the project is used. So as we've explained to staff, you could have one hundred percent community use. You could have one hundred percent private revenue generating use. Obviously, the recommendation is to meet that in the middle so that local families get to use this as a community amenity. But when we need to generate revenue, we can do that as well. It doesn't use the county's bond capacity. And we generally recommend having a private operator manage the facility. The private side is really good at that. We have the relationships with a lot of these groups and organizations who are willing to bring these tournaments and events to a sports complex. Very high-level financial model, right? And so this is kind of a financial model for operations. What we wanted to see as we started running through this is, can this facility support itself operationally? And again, very high level, yes, it can. We've got a full workbook behind this, but just to not make numbers really, really small, we just kind of boiled this down to top line, bottom line, income, expenses, and operating income. And so from there, what we wanted to look at was, in addition to being able to support itself, can the facility support its own debt? And what is the economic impact of a facility on direct spending, on visitors, on tax revenue, on, you know, all of the other kind of non-direct revenue? And so what we're projecting here, if you can, I don't know if you can see my little green laser on your screen, but direct spending of about forty-eight million dollars in year one, another thirty million dollars of indirect spending, which gives you about eighty million dollars of total economic impact for the region. From there, county sales tax generated is about four hundred thousand dollars. TDC revenue is about seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And so that gives a total tax impact to the county of a little over a million dollars in the first year. And that's not put back into this project. That is, that is direct tax revenue that is the county's. So from there, we've got our eight hundred thousand dollars of estimated operating income. Our naming rights capital from that previous slide, it gives us the available of about five point one million. There's an annual six million dollar payment to repay the capital that's brought to the project. And so it leaves us using a dedicated reserve fund that we've created of three million dollars to pay, to help support the first year of operating subsidy for the sports complex, which reduces our reserve fund. We project that the first two years will require the use of a reserve fund that we create that's dedicated to the sports complex that comes from these naming rights. After year two, the facility is able to support its own operating expenses and its own debt, and it will return a modest amount back to the county, one hundred and seventy thousand, five hundred thousand, eight hundred thousand, over the years three, four, and five. And so we see this kind of a light-at-the-end-of-the-tunnel model, where it will require support at the beginning, but we've already funded that support. So in this situation, the county doesn't have to come out of general revenues to pay any of the expenses for the sports complex. And so as far as the process goes, we've done the feasibility study. We're presenting this to you now. We've met with community partners. We've met with the landowner. We've started crafting the structure of what this public-private partnership looks like. And we'll get into kind of what our next steps are here in a minute. But as you can see, there's not too many more steps to go. Eventually, we'll get into pre-construction, actual construction, and grand opening. In talking with the landowner, kind of looking at the Loop Road construction as well, both the sports complex of where it's sitting and the Loop Road construction, both of those things can happen at the same time. We're not dependent on the Loop Road to begin construction. We have other access points. So that by the time the Loop Road is finished, the sports complex will be finished as well, right? And so that's, I think, a good way to be a catalyst for everything else that's potentially going out there, to be able to bring sports in there first. And so then we've assembled just a handful of FAQs that have come up with, working with other municipalities. And so you guys may have some of these same questions. You may have some other questions. But again, I'm not gonna read through all the questions and answers. You have these in your packets. But we take into account things like non-appropriations, repair and replacement, maintenance. All of that's handled by the private operator. And this gives the best mix of public use and private revenue generation. And so I don't know exactly, and this is where county staff may want to chime in, or Amy, as far as what we see as next steps, but certainly open to y'all's recommendation and guidance. Our general next steps would be consensus from the commission to continue to move this forward. And then consensus for me to continue working with county staff to bring forward to you, to review a draft of what an MOU would look like for a funding partnership and a pre-construction or a pre-development agreement. At that point, then, County Commission would vote to continue moving that project forward, you know, based on my work with legal and everybody else. And so with that, I know you guys had a long morning. I didn't want to take up too much more of it.
Told you that.
I'm happy to answer any questions from you all, or I know you wanted to have some public comment as well.
I'll open it up for the commission. So who's got some questions?
So this is, this is a county project, not a city project.
Currently, yes, sir.
It's our project.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thanks.
Quite a bit of that budget is contingent upon naming rights. I think it's like four to six million. It's a large portion of it. So tell me a little bit more about how, who acquires the naming rights? Who does that work?
Yeah, so the private side does that. I can go back in here, but it's in your packet. It was a screenshot from, and you have the PDF in there. But we have a partner who handles our naming rights. And so they will work locally, regionally, nationally with what are called naming rights partners. So people that want to put their name on something. And so in their initial work over the past month or so, they've gotten soft commitments for about thirty-three million dollars.
Okay, so they'll continue on throughout this lease to work on that naming right?
And then the local operator will work locally for your local businesses, for advertising, right, for the local coffee shop, the local deli that wants to run ads on TVs, that wants to offer a promotion to kids and families that come in. That's all part of the private side operations.
Questions on this side? I'm gonna, just to piggyback on Commissioner Pennington's, from the very beginning, I was leery about the sponsorship part. I mean, because that's I mean, because that's a huge component of making this viable. So you come in with, with the contractually obligated income projections. You have the reserve, which I didn't remember last time, was it, has that always been there, the 3 million?
Yes, yes, sir. It's always been there. We talked through it.
Okay.
Previously, I made more of a call out to it today.
So, and in the end, your, your investors are in this to make sure that there's a return for them, which really only works if you're bringing in the sponsorship as well. So to your benefit, to your investors' benefit, this doesn't work without those contractually obligated naming rights.
Correct.
That you have on that slide. So, and if if the project doesn't work, you don't do any more projects.
That's right. So we are, we are much more a vested partner in this than just a, just a vendor or just a consulting.
Right. I get that. It's all, it's all coming together a little bit. Still doesn't alleviate some of the the nerves and the angst, but you had a slide, and I apologize, I didn't go back and read. One of mine was, was obviously at 30 years, county assumes the project. But in that life, in that, a lot of it is artificial turf. So talk to me about the lifespan of artificial turf in your, in your experience, and, and that's built in these replacements of the?
Yes, sir.
Because that's a huge component, is the artificial turf area.
Right. No, you're exactly right. So our goal is to turn over this project to the county in, in as new of condition as can be, right? We want to give you back a new project, right? A new building, new turf fields. So turf fields will, they'll, they'll generally last about 12 years, give or take, right? So there will be replacement cycles, but that's already built into the budget. And so those will get, you know, usually on some sort of a rotation, will get replaced over time. Basketball courts will get replaced over time, scoreboards will get replaced over time. Because what you don't want to have is 10, 15, 20 years from now, we're all long gone, but you've got some dilapidated buildings. So we will come in and replace that, replace the turf, replace the scoreboards, replace the bleachers, the netting, so you have, you know, the the best facility that you're able to.
And once the $6 million payment isn't being paid, that goes back into operation maintenance of it.
Correct. Yep.
So the the Loop Road, what have you heard on the Loop Road timing?
I have heard that they've got their initial tranche, but not much, I don't, I don't know much more than that.
So construction schedule, engineering design, you don't know?
No, I, I would imagine the folks at Ray and Ear, the city, would know.
Okay.
Does your project rely on the Loop Road completely built, or can you live with it if it only comes halfway?
We can live with it if it only comes halfway, and I don't, Amy, I don't know if you remember that road we drove up. We went out to that property. I thought the world ended before you got there. But there is a, a southern access road that you can access the fields and and everything else, even if the the Loop Road starts from the north and comes down.
So you're, one of your slides talked about the municipality contractually being obligated, or you could take it back. So tell me about the obligations you see the county having.
Yep. So like I said, it doesn't require the county, it, essentially, you look at this as a lease. All right, that's the easiest way to explain how this works. So the county, just like if you went to lease a car, you could lease it without putting any money down. And so there's no capital, you don't have to come in with $20 million, $30 million. You have that lease obligation, and, you know, again, getting into finance here, but it would show up as a one-year lease obligation, and the way it's structured, because of non-appropriations, is essentially a one-year lease with 29 renewals attached to it, because you can't commit future commissions. From there, if profit is, is put back into the project, naming rights, whatever, that $6 million can be paid down early, and whenever it's paid for, everything gets titled back over to the county, just like if you pay the lease off on your car and you want to keep your car. But that is the, the commitment of the county. Their risk to the county can also be mitigated, and I think I had this in a, in an FAQ. Risk to the county can be mitigated, one, through this reserve fund. Wow, here we go again. So this very last one on this, on this executive summary. The reserve fund, some TDC revenue can be used as a backstop. That's what Sebring is doing, is they have an agreement with their TDC that says, hey, we don't want to be on the hook first. So if there's any support that's needed, TDC is going to support the project first. Then there's other intergovernmental agreements with local municipalities, whether it's Palm Coast or, you know, other cities and towns within the county, of them sharing on the, on the upside, but then also having some responsibility to support the project. And so those agreements I can, I can help work out. But then that shares the risk too between other cities, because they're going to benefit, their residents are going to benefit, their businesses are going to benefit, and they may want some of the upside benefit as well. And so intergovernmental agreements, TDC participation, this reserve account can all be used to, Mr. Dance, to your point, lower the risk of, you know, the county being solely unbounded in, in their risk.
So, may I?
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
So working with tourism, we have all these sports, are cyclical or seasonal, I guess. Even if half the year was filled at this point with tournament play, do we have housing to, to help these tournaments? I mean, do we, can we handle this, housing, as far as hotels? Beds, whatever? I know we have short-term rentals, but...
Well, the beauty of this project is that it would spur, spur more hotels, more rooms to be by the sports complex.
And we have that capacity?
Yes.
Right?
Yep.
Yep.
And I'll, you know, to piggyback on Amy's point, it takes a lot less time to build a hotel than it does a big sports complex. Right? So, you know, as this moves through, planning, zoning, approvals, she's going to be getting phone calls, or economic development's going to be getting phone calls, you know, I'd like to put a hotel here. Those can be built in a matter of months rather than, you know, a couple of years.
I also have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
This design of business, how many have you done, and how many years have you been doing it?
Yep.
And how many years have any been existing where we could be able to maybe purview their?
Sure.
Situation?
Yep. So I've been in sports development and sports consulting for 25 years. Public-private partnerships pre-COVID looked different than this. This lease-backed model was used, like I mentioned, in public infrastructure, wastewater treatment plants, infrastructure projects, where a private developer would come in and then lease that back to a municipality. Public-private partnerships on sports used to be what Alachua County, how they were built, basically. County comes in and says, here's $35 million. Whatever it costs more than that, private guys, you go build it. Post-COVID, the sentiment among developers has changed. You know, even if, like I showed, it makes $800,000 at the end of the, you know, at the end of a year. If it costs $90 million to build, that's not worth a developer's time, rate of return, debt, what they have to pay on debt. So the private developer side and that public-private partnership has kind of gone by the wayside where it's not really a viable option. And so right now, where we stand, Alachua County is, is operating, it's under a little bit different structure. We've got a, another handful, dozen or so, up in the Northeast that are operating as public-private partnerships with one of our other operating partners. This model has been around about three years, so there's none that could have gone fully through the development process and are operating. We've got a couple in Texas that are, have already broken ground. We've got one in Arizona that's about double this size, that is going through its final approvals with city council, and, and will, will get started here in the next couple of months.
Yes, sir.
If, if we go through with this project, what is the impact on the city of Palm Coast? For instance, their sports fields at Indian Trails and where they, in, in our field at Wadsworth Park, where they currently hold all these big tournaments that now will not get there?
So there'll always be complimentary fields, right? There, you know, Palm Coast, the fields here will still be complimentary, they'll still be public access, but they can support, the, the sports complex can support the other fields that are in the community too. And so when we look at 20 fields here, to get a really big tournament, they could overflow to those other fields and be able to have 24, 28, 30 fields. Or now you, you're in a situation where maybe soccer is taking up all of the fields at the new sports complex, but now lacrosse can go play at a different sports complex, or, you know, Ultimate Frisbee is playing down at Palm Coast while something else. So now it, it really exponentially improves your ability to bring in more things at the same time, rather than just locking down one set of fields.
Yeah, I don't want to speak for Mr. Hirsch, but you'll notice there's no diamonds on this plan, so...
Nope, no diamonds.
There's plenty of opportunities for the city of Palm Coast with diamonds, softball, baseball, whatever. So this is just fields.
Exactly. Just flat fields.
Yep.
That's all we got.
Did I get that right? Anything else? You want to go to public comment?
All right. Thank you guys.
We will bring you back up. Don't go anywhere.
I'm sure. I'm close.
Okay. So at this time, we'll open it up for public comment. Speakers will have three minutes. Just come up to the podium, state your name and your questions. Don't be shy. Come on up.
I did not plan to speak on this event, but I just wanted to say that from my perspective, I'm all in. So a little bit about my past work history. I worked and depended on facilities like this for the events that we brought to communities for the consumer products brands that I managed. So in Jacksonville, for example, we used the fairgrounds because we didn't have a facility like this. We took it back to School Fest and grew it from 500 people to 7,000 participants. So the need for this far extends that of a sports complex, because it will be used for other areas all throughout the year. Some of the types of things that we used facilities like this for were fundraisers for the American Cancer Society, the Diabetes Foundation, different walks, that, it's just endless. In an email that I sent to the vice mayor, I offered to volunteer my support for any type projects going on in the city or county. That offer is still there, and I guarantee you, we could bring in businesses and companies to support this complex in addition to the sports. My grandchildren are all in sports, and it is big money, even when they're this big. My daughters, my granddaughters that are in cheerleading, for example, you're looking at 10 grand a year. So my grandson in soccer, and these parents will go to no ends, like, and grandparents to support their children. So unless there's something I'm not seeing here, I totally support this type of facility. Thank you.
Thank you. I know there's some league people from leagues here that were anxious to hear from another parent, so, Mr. Long, yes, sir?
Yeah, Ron Long, Auto Drive. Sounds great. It's a wonderful plan. My only question would be, in a situation where, let's say, possibly they can't secure, you know, they, they get the, the advertising, the building advertising for a few years, something falls out, and they wind up not being able to secure it, is, is that now on the county's fault that they've still got to come up with that $6 million? Or are they liable that they didn't hold their end of the bargain? Is that part of the bargain that you have to help us get this advertising, I guess? Because that's a huge part.
Yep. Yeah, no, thanks for the question. I think that's a, that's a great question and a good concern. So we do a couple of things to kind of address that. One, we're not going to ask the county to move forward until we have a pretty good idea of where our sponsorships are, where our commitments are for tournaments and events. Because like Mr. Dan said, if this doesn't work for us, we don't fund the next project, right? But then from there, a lot of, second point, most of these sponsorships, these naming rights, are 10-year terms. So we know that we're getting five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10 years of a commitment. So if there's a, a healthcare organization or a finance corporation that wants to do $1 million over 10 years, we know we're getting $100,000 a year for the next 10 years. But third, most, well, third out of four, I guess, is if, if it ends up being short, right, or not coming to fruition, it's going to be in the later years. And so by then, we've given the sports complex that runway to start generating its own revenue. But similar to what I explained about municipalities, the Palm Coast may be amenable to, hey, give us part of the profit, we'll take on some of the risk. The operator will also do that. So in, in your example, maybe there's not enough tournaments that, you know, we project. If the operator puts a budget together and says, we're going to make $500,000 next year profit. If they make $1 million next year, there's probably a bonus in there for them. But if they lose $1 million, there's a responsibility in there for them as well. So we, we try to, it's kind of what's fair, right? So if the, if the operator outperforms, great, but if they sit on their hands and don't do anything, then they're responsible for part of that loss. And so all of that stuff gets thrown into the meat grinder. Sponsorships, naming rights, agreements with local cities, TDC revenue, operator responsibility. And so you can see how what was just the county's responsibility now really gets spread around so that the community can benefit, but it's not putting all of the onus just on the county.
Okay, thank you. One question, it's still public comment, so I'll be, I'll be back to the, the audience, but something came up where about, I know there's a few operators of leagues and stuff here, so this is a for-profit entity until it comes back to the county. And so how does, how does it work with the, with leagues that don't have a lot of capital?
Yes.
Local leagues? I'm worried about our local people.
Absolutely. No, so I'm not going to argue. I'm going to clarify.
Okay.
It's not a for-profit facility, like you would think of a batting cage facility or something like that. The goal of the project, the goal of the facility is to pay operating expenses and pay debt. And that's it. And, and drive sports tourism revenue, right? Because they're, the county is the master leaseholder, or they're, they are in control. So as a county, you don't necessarily need to make a ton of money on a sports complex. You just don't want to lose money. So there's always two levers, and I've explained this to county staff. There's public use and there's revenue. If one lever goes up, the other lever has to go down. And so in the case of local organizations, local nonprofits that are running soccer groups or whatever, there's a place for them, and it's at a reduced cost, it's for free, but there's a balance. And we're very frank about that, that if you eat up all of your revenue generating time being a community facility, then you're just a community facility, and you still have to pay your lease.
Right.
So there's a place for all of that, but there's not a place for just one of that. And so we absolutely, again, our goal is to break even plus a dollar.
Gotcha. Next speaker, please. Over here.
Good afternoon. My name's David Ferguson. I'm with Palm Coast. This is for the gentleman. I have witnessed firsthand the, I call it a money grab, when we see our grandkids play volleyball or soccer in some facility. We, we travel around the state to a lot of smaller counties like, and we went to the Big House in Tavares, and it's a huge complex with tennis, basketball courts, volleyball, parking, and you pay for parking, you pay to go in, so there's a lot of revenue to be generated. But my questions really are, the size of our county and the number of children that are involved in sports is relatively small to St. John's and in, in other surrounding counties. So is the model that you built based on outside money coming in? And what percent is outside money versus? money versus locally generated revenue? Would be my question.
Thank you, sir. And go Gators. Absolutely. So that's a great question. So, there's a, there's a local model, and then there's a sports tourism model. So, we can't look at these facilities as, well, we're in Flagler County and the population is X or Y, and that's all we're looking at, right? Monday through Thursday, this is gonna be a facility for the local clubs, the local organizations, basketball groups, cheerleading groups, whatever the case may be. And those folks are gonna, they're gonna reasonably drive from about an hour away, hour and a half away, right? Because if I live three hours away, I'm not bringing my kid to practice every day down at, at the sports complex. And so, Monday through Thursday, it's gonna be, you know, pickleball in the morning, or tennis, or a walking track inside where moms and dads and, and grandmas and grandpas can come and just walk, you know, walk around a track, sit down at a cafe and eat lunch. And so to your question, that Monday through Thursday revenue, that's not, there's not a lot of economic impact associated with that, because it's people that live here, right? It's your school kids that are coming over there. You have to make sure you speak into the mics.
Oh yeah, sorry. But those are the kids that are gonna be generating a lot of that weekday revenue. And then, on the weekend is when those, that out-of-town spending is gonna come in, and that's gonna kind of put everything into overdrive. And so you're gonna have, again, it goes back to that balance of community use and, and sports tourism, where there's a place for the local community, Monday through Thursday, all hours of the day. Um, and then there's the big tournaments that come in. And when we program this, right, if there's a local group that wants to have a local tournament, there's a place for that. And, you know, there's, it's naive to think that you're gonna fill up 52 weekends out of the year, you're not, right? If we get 40 weekends, that's gonna be pretty good. Um, and, but then that lets the community do things out there. That's, may not be necessarily sports-related, right? There's a festival, there's a, um, you know, just a community day with inflatables and bounce houses and stuff like that. Um, or there's a Saturday where you and your kids and your grandkids can just go out and kick a soccer ball or go play basketball. Um, it's not designed or intended to be an elitist kind of facility where you can't get in if you don't pay. Does that answer your question? Thank you.
Floor's yours. Welcome.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Um, my name's Sean Bobb, I'm the Executive Director for Palm Coast Florida Elite Soccer Academy, and soon to be Sporting Palm Coast. So, we have a, a pretty big-sized soccer club here in town, and it's growing, it's rapidly growing. We do several weekends of tournaments where we bring in and fill the fields, fill the area, where we bring teams from all around the state, the region, and the country. We, with a facility like this, we could do so much more for the kids here in Palm Coast, saves them travel, but the economic impact that can be brought in here is in the tens of millions, obviously with hotels, restaurants, gas, things like that. Our contacts go beyond just our club in Palm Coast. We help run the state leagues, the region, and the national leagues. And on those levels, they are looking for a, 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 a complex like this that could host these events, that would bring teams and people from all around the nation, all around the state, that would put a tremendous amount of money into the economy. So, a facility like this would be great for the kids of Palm Coast, because the club is growing, and we're outgrowing the fields that we have at Indian Trails, which are very good, and the parks people do a great job. But something like this would really help the kids here, but also bringing in those tourism dollars, the economic impact, and things like that. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, appreciate your comments.
Hi there, good afternoon. My name's Steve Livingstone, uh, and I'm the President and CEO of Sporting Club Jacksonville, elevating St. John's County. Uh, but as Sean mentioned before me, uh, we have an interest in Palm Coast, uh, as we see soccer growing. We are bringing, um, high-level professional, uh, soccer to Northeast Florida, uh, through the United Soccer League. And, uh, we'll actually be kicking off with a, a women's Division One team, uh, in Jacksonville, uh, this August. Um, Palm Coast and Flagler County is a really important area for us as well. We see a, a huge amount of, of growth in soccer. And, uh, what we are trying to do is bring, um, a pathway to professional soccer for kids who start at age two, three, four, um, and give them something to aim for here in the local area. Uh, we really support this project. Uh, we, we love the project, we'd love to have one up in St. John's County and, and in Duval County as well. Uh, you guys would certainly be leading the state in terms of this type of facility. Um, and, and we fully, uh, we fully endorse it and we fully back it. We would eventually like to consider potentially bringing a pro team to the Palm Coast area, uh, to play in USL League One. Um, we think a 3,000-capacity showpiece stadium would be perfect for that. Again, the economic impact on, uh, bringing a facility like that, uh, would be, I think, phenomenal, uh, for the county. Um, but the, the beauty of this project is that, as, as Jason had mentioned earlier, that during the week, um, kind of Monday to Thursday, it's really a huge benefit to the community. Um, an opportunity for all sports to come out and use the facility, and then, again, for the, for the county to, to benefit from the economic impact on the weekend from tournament play and from other play. So, again, we, we fully endorse the, the, the project, we, we hope that you guys would support it, and we'd be happy to, to lend our support and answer any questions, um, down the road. But thank you.
Thank you.
Hi guys, Tiffany Wigan, um, lifelong resident here, current recreational director at Florida Elite, soon to be Sporting Palm Coast. Um, a couple of things I wanted to bring up, especially growing up here in this area, between Flagler County and Palm Coast, we've added very little flat fields to our community. Um, in fact, the fields that I continue to be at five to six days a week are the fields I grew up playing on. Um, we've added rimfire in the course of the last 15 years, I think, so to speak, maybe correct me if I'm wrong, but we haven't really added a lot. Our community has grown significantly, our young families have grown significantly, and at this time, we are literally running out of space. Commissioner Hanson, to go back to what you said about, um, are we, Indian Trails, is it enough? Are we filling fields? We churned away teams at our current tournaments, the last two tournaments, the last two years. We have told teams, nope, you didn't meet the deadline, we've run out of field space. Um, at the end of the day, that turns around, and we are churning away tourism dollars that our community depends on. We are a tourism community, and youth sports is a part of tourism. It's a huge multimillion-dollar business, and to turn away teams, not just from our local community, but I have met at the last couple of tournaments, teams from Virginia, North Carolina, Georgia, joining us here in Flagler County, so excited to utilize our beaches, our community, our parks, things like that. Um, I want to give a shout out to Palm Coast Parks and Recs, because every time these communities come to us, they say how beautiful Indian Trails is. We need more of that. We need more of the ability to host more families, more teams, more events here in our area. Um, and I think there's a lot of public, um, misunderstanding that it's not just soccer. This could be the home show. This could be gymnastics events, this could be basketball, this could be track, it could be flag football, it could be soccer, it could be so many things other than just soccer. So, I know we have a lot of soccer in the community here, supporting this, this, uh, this potential project, but there's so much more that can benefit within our community from here. Um, we have turned away teams, and that's a very difficult thing. I know also too, we have an issue right now at Indian Trails with the amount of community members that want to utilize the fields, but we are fully booked. We cannot allow adults that are uninsured, unbackground-checked, on the fields with our kids at the same time. I am constantly telling community members, I'm sorry, but you have to leave the field. You cannot be here right now. We are permitted for this field at this space at this time, and due to insurance purposes and background checks, we can't have other adults on the fields. So now we have community members that cannot utilize the fields because we already are at max capacity. This is something that we need, and it's a part of our community that we need to focus on right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, and thank you. I'm Agnes Lightfoot, I'm a resident of Palm Coast. I think my timing's a little off, but I want to talk about the regular residents of Palm Coast. One of the things that we have every year is a graduation, and we have to take our parents and our kids to another community to graduate, because we don't have the capacity of building, uh, and, and facilities for that. And I think this will answer one of the questions. I know it's a little bit off of the timing, uh, because we're talking about sports, but, uh, I think it's one thing we gotta keep in mind. And she already mentioned a couple of the other things that we give here, or we hold here in this town, and we need the facility, and we need the parking, as well as the indoor facility for that. Thank you.
Thank you. You saved me from bringing that up later, thank you, Agnes.
Good afternoon, Ed Fuller, Honorable Chairman, Honorable County Commissioners. First of all, that's a great idea. Uh, in keeping with your innovative stance here, how about a, a coaches academy, right here in the Palm Coast? That would be, that would be 365 days a year. I don't know if you ever considered that, but where we're located, are you kidding me? We're right smack dab where we need to be. Don't know, you know, this isn't like a World Beatle ID for you, I'm sure, but, hey, look, why not? Well, we can talk later. But, you know, if, if we've got something, let's utilize, that's part of it. This can expand a whole lot. You know, any, do you contact any TV stations? We need some TV coverage. If, if we're gonna go, you know what I'm saying? We need TV coverage. What do everybody want to do? My kid plays, he plays soccer, semi-pro, whatever. Unbelievable. So, and, and we don't want to be out of Orlando. Jacksonville, we're closer to them. I'll give that idea too, as well, but that's saying, what about the police presence, uh, on these things on the weekends? That, there's gonna be a big congregation of, uh, crowds, and I imagine you all take that into account, but obviously, and there has to be EMTs there as, as well, is that paid in addition to these events? I don't, I really don't know how that works, but I know you have to have them. So, that's just another, another thought. And then may, dare I say, is there liquor involved, or beer at these things? Do you have that in mind at all? I'm, I'm just, just, well, okay. And then, then there's all kinds of concession things you can buy. Hats, right? I've been to Flagler County Tournament, whatever. Where, who does, who gets those rights? You know, for the, for the bling, the hats, the whatever. That stuff you can sell, I don't know how that goes, but those are just thoughts. Tune, I hope some of them goes. You throw out three and you get one, that's not too bad. Thank you.
Thank you, Coach Fuller. Did you want to address some of those?
I don't even know where to start.
Coaching, concessions.
Yeah, so, no, those are, those are all good. So, starting from the top, yes, the indoor facility, and, and we haven't really gotten past just the, a rectangle on a map, but, um, as we design that out into breakout rooms and conference rooms, there's education spaces, um, places to, to, you know, projectors and, and whatnot. So you could have coaches' clinics all day long. Um, technology, TV, um, that's already kind of part of the model. There's a, and I know Steve and, and Sean, if they're still here, know a lot about this as well. Um, but, you know, you go to a soccer game and, you know, there's a, there's a camera that grandma that lives in Wisconsin can pay five bucks and, and watch their kid play, you know, soccer. Um, so that technology kind of is already, we, we've thought about that. Um, you know, merchandise, gear, there is a retail component. Um, it's typically an, an outsourced thing, so, you know, we don't want to be the experts in selling t-shirts, but there may be a, a great local company that wants to set up shop and, and sell t-shirts and hats. Um, the, the liquor thing, the alcohol, the beer, that's really up to the county. Um, we've seen it both ways. It makes it a whole lot more enjoyable to watch your kid practice if you can have a beer sometimes, but it goes to the philosophy of the commission. We're agnostic, we don't, we don't have a dog in that fight. Uh, we've seen, uh, Alachua County, they serve alcohol, but they don't do it all the time. Um, Monday through Thursday, I, I don't think you can, right, if you're just taking your kid to practice. Um, but some of their big tournament weekends, then they do allow it. And so, that can all be kind of figured out, but it's not, you know, it, it doesn't have to be one way or the other, so.
EMT, police?
So EMT police is already, yes, that is required. Uh, EMTs are required. Um, police, if you've seen some of these viral videos of these big sports complexes, basketball tournaments go crazy.
It's built into the operating.
That's all part of the operations, yep. And so, either, um, you know, similar to if a local police officer moonlights at a school, um, they've got that ability, there's private security. Um, they call them occasional services or contracted services. Same thing for, uh, um, you know, trash, picking up trash and, and things like that, parking attendants. On a tournament weekend, those folks will flood in, that creates more additional revenue and direct, you know, economic impact. Um, and so we always look to the county first, if there's resources locally that want to be part of that, then great. If not, then we'll start to venture out.
Can I, can I ask that question on, we were, you were talking about this, uh, this is towards you, I'm sorry. That big facility, the big room, the big venue, um, how many seats can be put in there with reasonable, uh, access to all these other exterior, like it's a perimeter of businesses? So, let's say we have a concession stand open or something like that during an event, a concert, um, a gathering, a convention, a fair, whatever we can do in there, and we can probably get a lot of use out of that.
Sure.
How many seats are they, like, we had a gymnasium where I grew up in South Florida.
Retractable, yeah.
Retractable gymnasium, and there was a lot of seating, but when you go to the colleges and stuff, they have these huge auditoriums. So, just thinking about our small community and what we've got, how many seats do you think those rafters would fill in?
So, it depends on the configuration, right? So, if it's, if it's a, if it's set up for eight basketball courts and they're all being used, then you're gonna have some bleachers on either side, maybe a couple of the portable bleachers in between courts. Um, but then if you, you know, no different than if you go to a basketball arena for a concert, that looks different than when they're playing basketball. So if it's a concert, then you've got a bunch of floor seating and you've got a stage at one end. So, we don't want to overbuild things, right? We'd rather bring in portable bleachers, but somewhere around 3,000 seats on the inside, where you can just bring out one side and you just have 1,500, you can bring out both sides. And then if you need to, a lot of times, these, these eight-court facilities, think of a, just a big rectangle, um, if you get down to two final teams and they play on one court in the middle, then you can bring in additional floor seating and make it kind of a true championship experience. Yep, yes ma'am.
Those attendance numbers, so it...
Yes, ma'am.
It could expand, because...
Miss Lightfoot, nobody can hear you from back there. It's okay.
Well, go ahead and address the, uh, the, having a grad, high school graduation there, which is critical.
Yep, high school graduations, um, we do that a lot. It, it goes back to the analogy of a concert, similar thing, stage at one end, seating in the middle, right? At, at the most basic level, these indoor facilities give you about 100,000 square feet of just open floor space, right? So you can put, you know, chairs for students all the way back, parents sit in the stands, parents can sit on, on, you know, in the rear. Uh, and so you could have, you know, 3,000, 4,000 potential seats in there.
Okay. I would just ask, as we move forward, we have some conversations with the school districts, so they...
For sure.
Yeah. Could, we have big schools unfortunately, which means big crowds. Public comment, come on up.
Hello, good morning. My name is Beatrice Sofler. Um, I am a parent here also, and my children play sports. Um, I'm a, I wanted to represent the other sports. They play basketball, volleyball, um, travel, football, and flag football. And just wanted to make sure that in everything that we represent them to in being able to access these facilities, um, one of the things is I noticed here, like with volleyball, we have limited, like, court availability, like fighting with the schools, not fighting, but, you know, working with them to try to find time for the travel sports, and we... And we've now reached capacity of being able to have practices. And we attempted to have a tournament, but it just wasn't able to at the high school. So I can say for us that we are in agreement that this is needed, very much so. And as a parent with a senior this year, and the idea of them having to travel to Daytona for prom is kind of like scary. You know, it would be awesome if they were able to travel here and, you know, locally and be able to, you know, enjoy their senior year here without having to, you know, go that far for, you know, prom. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think the big facility, the big room they're building, they're talking about would be for your indoor sports.
Raymond Royer, Paintersville. Yeah, I think this complex is going to be a nice additive to the county. The only question I would have is what the chairman was talking about 30 years out, is there any way we could do some kind of a bond agreement that after 30 years, there's, there's money there in case you do pull out and, and the courts and everything are in shambles? Or is there some kind of agreement as a county that should have control year to year to make sure you're hitting those expectations for maintaining the facility? That's the only thing I see that's great in me. So I just was wondering how he would answer that. So you guys can make a financial, you know, agreement with this private entity. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, so that's another, a good question and something we've run into in the past. And so as we move forward with this, you know, assuming there's, there's support to do that, eventually we get to county commission or, you know, Amy through her office or, or, you know, county staff interviewing a handful of different operators, some of our partners that operate facilities. Again, we'll introduce you to several. You guys will jive with one or, or another. And to, to this gentleman's point, all of that is, is part of that operating agreement, that certain funds will be set aside, certain funds will be used for this or for that. And so when you do get to the point where it's turned over to the county, then all of the, the courts are new, the, the fields are new or, or whatever. And so all of that can be addressed in, in kind of a management agreement.
Okay, very good. Welcome.
Hi there. I'm John Phillips. I'm the president of the Palm Coast Flagler Chamber of Commerce. In addition to that.
Welcome, sir.
Good to see you all.
Our first, first time here before us, so thank you.
Yeah, first time here. I've, I've been here a month, so. I do have one fan in Ed Fuller, so thank you. In addition to my role with the chamber, I spent a number of years as the parent of a couple of travel soccer players and a travel baseball player. If there's a soccer field in the state of Florida, I think I've been there. In addition to that, I, I served on the board at the Ormond Beach Soccer Club when my kids were little. They're all in college now, so that's been several years ago. So I feel like I have a little perspective there.
This is your thing though.
This is kind of my thing.
I mean, this is Embry-Riddle too, right?
Yeah, I'll, I'll get to that. I spent, I spent eight years on the Convention and Visitors Bureau in the Daytona Beach area. So I understand sports tourism. Amy and I speak the same language. As you mentioned, I spent 27 years in collegiate athletics as, as the director of athletics at Embry-Riddle. So I understand that side. I've been to the Alachua County Sport Complex on multiple occasions because as he mentioned, and this is a critical point, it is the only indoor track facility in the state of Florida. Embry-Riddle competes in the Peach Belt Conference for track. There's also a Florida Sun Conference for, for NAIA schools. There are at least 20 schools in the state of Florida and others outside the state that have nowhere to go for an indoor track championship. I spent thousands of dollars of Embry-Riddle's money to send our teams to Birmingham, Alabama, or to Clemson, South Carolina, because there was no facility in the state of Florida. The Alachua County Sports Complex answered that for us, allowed our students to not miss class and to save a lot of money in travel at a wonderful facility. If you've not seen that facility, I would encourage you to take a look at it. That's the indoor side of this complex. Then the outdoor side is totally separate. They don't have that in Alachua County. So a couple of other quick points, and I only have a minute left. When the economy is good, parents travel with their kids for youth sports. When the economy is bad, parents travel with their kids for youth sports. It is year-round. It is not going to go away. If we don't act quickly, someone else might beat us to the punch. If you've followed the newspaper, the city of Daytona Beach has proposed to build an approximately $100 million sports complex west of Daytona Beach. That's starting to encroach on our territory. I'm not saying we rush a decision, but at the same time, if you don't strike quickly, someone else might strike for you, whether that's Alachua County, Sebring, I've been to, but Polk County has wonderful sports facilities. There are a lot of places that are looking to do just this. So the last thing I'll leave you with is the flexibility. Someone mentioned graduation, expos. That indoor facility is a lot more than just sports. This will be the economic impact that Palm Coast and Flagler County needs. Our residents will benefit, plus sales tax, tourism tax, bed tax, and other spending will come from others that will visit our destination to come to this venue. Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Carmen Stanford. I'm a parent and also my daughter played sports for many years. And although there will be no softball fields, I have to say that we spent an incredible amount of money going to Volusia for practices, private coaching, because it's really, the fields were either busy, used, there were no coaches available. But also I want you to think about the opportunity for, for our students, for our children who cannot play travel ball. And I personally know quite a few of them who cannot afford it. They cannot afford tens of thousands of dollars to go. And these are talented children. These are very talented, who would love to play, who would love to go, but they cannot afford it. A facility like this, I believe that it would give them the opportunity to stay local and still really do what they really love to do, play the sports they want to do. So I, I truly believe that there's so many opportunities that it would give to our children and they need it from, you know, they're teenagers, they may even get a job at the facility. There's so many things besides just playing sports. And as my daughter said, Flagler County never builds anything for us, for kids. And I'm afraid she's right. So please, just when you make your decision, keep the kids in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comment? All right, seeing none, we'll bring it back. Final comments, next steps from us. Any other questions?
This is more of a comment. I don't know how many of you have been to the Fitzgerald Performing Arts Center, but I was very intimately involved in that for many, many years. And our school board and our government, local government, Flagler County, was a little diff, took a little bit of a different approach when building that high school. They had a vision that the school would be used during the week for the children and on the weekends for performing arts, bringing professional or semi-professional shows to Flagler County. And boy, am I glad they did because now 30 years into this, we have a well-maintained, beautiful 1100 to 1200 seat auditorium that I find hard trying to find one, anything like it in, around the area. Ormond, the seat's too small, Daytona's too far away, and I have to pay $10 for parking. So I think this is in line with some of the past decisions made for the children because it was, it is, it's teaching our children arts, education, and lots of great skills. And I think this would, this kind of falls in line. It's a little bit bigger price tag attached to it. And the, they had to do a referendum to get a half-cent sales tax to add the additional capital needed for the Flagler Auditorium. But I think it's a little bit of the same kind of concept. And we just need to move out of the box a little bit on this. Again, grandparent, been there, done all the baseball tournaments, all the soccer tournaments. Amy's been saying this for years, this is not a new concept to Flagler County. Amy has got a very strong handle on if they don't go to the beach, then where do they go? And this kind of, this kind of tourism is going to take over the beach if it hasn't already done so. So thank you for coming to Flagler County. And we're going to keep this hopefully moving forward and give it our best. And I am in agreement with the parents that said, there's not much here for children. A lot of it's outside parks. We have more, we have dog parks, we have parks for children, but this would be a great inside facility. Don't have a swimming pool attached to it. I met somebody in the elevator, but, yeah, hi. But that doesn't mean there's no future in swimming pools. But this particular model is going to get us in that sports industry, sports marketing industry that I think we need.
Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I have to go back to our predecessor of Frank Meeker and in respect for how hard he fought for us to get the Indian Trails when there was no trails, when there was no place to go. The young lady who grew up here, you remember it, it was a fight to get it there. This is a gift for our community in so many ways. The lady from industrial background, you know, you understand, we're in a growth period that we've never been in before. We're reaching new heights. We have a lot of people that are professional backgrounds. I'm a soccer fanatic. I was a Strikers, Fort Lauderdale Strikers, God bless bestie. And you guys know who I'm talking about, Gerd Muller, Twins. So to me, that, we know the sport is amazing. And to be honored enough to get a facility that can address all of those things, plus offer us a great, huge opportunity to have our events, the proms, I mean, every person in here, I haven't seen anybody going, ooh. And that's a wonderful thing. That's a plus-plus in everybody's direction.
What's that? What's that, Kim?
Unlike earlier, right. This is the, this is the counteroffer to my earlier, if you were here earlier, you know, this is my counteroffer. Because I want what's all best for everyone. And this includes our entire county. So thank you for bringing this to us. And Amy, of course, thank you for your everlasting efforts in making our tourism even better.
All right. Any other questions, comments? The, I will say though, the attraction of the expansion of the fields for sports tourism, the indoor facility really nails it, especially from the points that were made, at least from the school district side for events. If we can nail a seating capacity that meets the requirements of holding graduation here in the county, I think that just kind of seals the, where everybody can kind of get behind the project.
So what we're seeking today is a consensus to show that you are interested in staff continuing to move forward with those next steps. That was on the, the last slide there of what that timeline would look like. It would be staff working with legal and synergy sports to bring back before you those agreements, maybe.
Okay.
So if we could have that consensus.
Do we kind of need visual consensus, yeses or nos, so that we can?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so you have five to move forward.
All right, thank you.
And as you scroll through, I don't know that anybody got to the letters of support that were at the end of the presentation, but they're, they're, make your way all the way through and you'll see the discussion that we had about those commitments and those, that's in your presentation too, so. I guess with that, we're done with that discussion? Okay. Thank you, everybody, for being here. If you were just here for this one, we'll give you a couple of minutes to, but we've got more county business to attend to, but you, it may bore you. But thank you very much.
Good job.
Thank you, Agnes.
It's well thought out.
And as you scroll through, I don't know that anybody got to the letters of support that were at the end of the presentation, but they're, they're, um, make your way all the way through and you'll see, um, the discussion that we had about those commitments and those, that's in, in your presentation too, so. Um, I guess with that, we're done with that discussion? Okay. Uh, thank you, everybody, for being here. If you were just here for this one, uh, we'll give you a couple minutes to, but we've got more county business to attend to, but you, it may bore you. But thank you very much.
Well, once they finish this new book, they'll be able to see one, right?
I don't know, this is a lot of them, so I'm curious.
See, they're good, but on these items, I appreciate it.
It's well thought out.
I mean, I think my...
Still hanging with us, all two of you.
Three!
We got three pros in the room, three pros.
All right, we are going to move on to our Affordable Housing Advisory Committee update. Mr. Hegidis?
Yes, good afternoon.
How are you, sir?
I'm good, thank you. All right, there's our slides. Uh, good afternoon, Commissioners. Joe Hegidis, Director with Health and Human Services, before you again. I am here today to provide an update on the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, uh, discussing aligning our local priorities with some state housing policy. We'll be going over some of those incentives, some statutory requirements, and also the Live Local Act to, to discuss key policies that shape local housing decisions in Flagler County. Please excuse my referencing my notes as we go. I want to make sure I hit all the key points. Uh, we've got about a dozen slides here that I'll go over for you. Some of these are just contextual background information. Uh, today we have three goals. One is to introduce the AHAC statutory incentives. What are they and why do they matter to us? We want to discuss the Live Local Act's impact on local housing policy and gather your feedback on priorities, processes, and implementation. And then ultimately, the goal of this presentation is to align the committee's focus with state mandates while ensuring priorities are considered, while your priorities are considered. So, for some quick background, uh, Florida law requires local governments plan for housing affordability and availability. Uh, this mandate was established by the Growth Management Act in 1985, which required comprehensive plans to be included in, to include a housing element. The SHIP Act was later created in response, providing funding and requiring regulatory, regulatory reviews to promote affordability. During its development, stakeholders identified key regulatory factors that affect housing costs. To address these, the Act requires local governments and their affordable housing committees review 11 state recommended housing incentives, of which three are mandated by statute. Those are listed there. Expedited review for affordable housing projects, a process to assess how local policies impact housing costs, and identification of public land suitable for affordable housing. Oh, jeez, I did it too. A quick draw. Oh, sorry, give me a moment here while I backtrack. Oh. Fourth slide, let's see. Up here? Okay, thank you. Um, so the Community Planning Act, adopted in 2011, uh, further continues the foundation laid by the Growth Management Act, and it requires local governments to plan for housing that meets the need of both current and future residents. This includes eliminating substandard housing conditions, improving existing housing stock, ensuring adequate sites for future housing, that includes workforce low-income and moderate-income households, supporting public land use for affordable housing. And why these three, these things matter is that the SHIP program was created as a result of these policies. So, the statutory language sets the foundation for AHAC's work. AHAC ensures that local government policies align with these principles by reviewing and recommending housing incentives that improve housing affordability in the community. Uh, I think, go forward, there we go, thank you. AHAC and SHIP funding are governed under the SHIP Act, which states that these programs have three purposes: meet the housing needs of very low to moderate-income households, expand production of and preserve affordable housing, and to further the housing element of local government's comprehensive plan. Here's our, our five L's, or legs of the stool, as, uh, you might want to think of it. AHAC operates under the instan, understanding that local regulations are one of the few housing costs that are fact, that we as a county can control. There are others such as labor, land, lumber, loans, all of which we have no control over. The one we do have control over is local policies and ordinances that impact housing costs. So, AHAC's role is to ensure the local government is maximizing its ability to support housing affordability through public land policies and regulatory policies while meeting the statutory requirements. The AHAC statute, uh, governs committee composition and statutory processes, and it provides those 11 specific incentives, primarily for specific, for affordable housing development, that the committee must review. They're required to consider these, uh, being implemented by local government, and if not, are there practical, other practical ways to implement some of the intentions behind those. So, here before you, we'll, we'll bring, come back to these, but just briefly, here are some of the state recommended housing incentives that the committee will be looking at this year. Um, they're reviewing whether local governments can provide incentives for things such as fee waivers, density, parking, setback requirements, lock configurations, and other, uh, aspects for builders and developers affordable housing. They're also encouraged to consider how local governments can allow accessory dwelling units to, uh, create more rental options, as these are seen as a naturally occurring affordable housing option. So, again, we'll circle back to those and get some feedback on those incentives momentarily. So, what's required under the statute? There's basically three things. One is expedited site plans and permit reviews for affordable housing projects. The second is that public lands owned by the county, uh, for, potentially for affordable housing development should be published. Um, we have a, something currently on our website that we're going to be beefing up and, and, um, adding to. And then the third is ongoing review process for, of cost impacts for local policies. Um, so you may recall, in December, the, the committee presented something to the board to add an agenda, a, a piece to every staff report, looking at the impacts and costs of potential policies and how that might relate to the development of affordable housing. Um, so again, those three components are required. How we do them and, and, um, the ways we do them, again, are, are kind of up to us for interpretation, but they must be met. All right, some recommendations are a starting point for us. They are not the, the final end-all-be-all. So, in terms of our process, the AHAC, um, follows a timeline to refine and review the recommendations. In April, they identify the, the ones that they want to look at this year. Throughout the year, they will meet and review those recommendations and incentives, trying to determine which of, of those they want to promote to the board for consideration. Then in September, a pre-workshop is held. The committee will review the recommendations with the board. Uh, then we hold a public hearing in November. And then December, we'll bring back those final incentives for your final consideration and hopefully adoption at that time. Then to close things out, every March, we kind of do a follow-up on, and, and develop an action plan or an implementation plan to, uh, chart out implementing the various recommendations that the board approves. So, that's kind of our timeline with the committee. Some of the impacts, considerations of the Live Local Act affect the work of the committee as well, and the work of the board, so we wanted to cover those as, today. The Live Local Act really reshapes Florida's housing policy and directly affects local governments. Some of the key takeaways are that, uh, SHIP, the, the SHIP and SAIL programs are fully funded at the state. In years past, funding could have been taken away or ebbed and flowed. This, uh, Act really codifies the funding for those programs and sets them in stone. Uh, and to a degree, it preempt local zoning for certain affordable housing projects. Um, it expands property tax exemption exemptions and public land requirements. It increases transparency through website mandates. And why all these things matter? Live Local Act influences local housing regulations and planning, as I've discussed, and some of the AHAC incentives align with the Live Local Act mandates. So, AHAC can help us integrate local priorities with these state requirements. And understanding those changes helps us ensure that we are effectively adapting while maintaining a focus on local priority. Just some, uh, quick updates in terms of our work on the Live Local Act. Um, we are working to update our website, uh, update adding a Live Local application, so there's a, a document that builders can fill out and complete and submit to Growth Management when they have a Live Local Act project, as well as, I mentioned, updating our list of publicly-owned lands that are available for affordable housing. So, the whole website's getting a little bit of a refresh in terms of all those items, and we'll be coming together probably in the coming weeks, um, to incorporate all those bits and pieces as it relates to the Live Local Act. Part of the Act requires having that information available on the website. There's one aspect of the, uh, Act that had been brought up in the past, so we wanted to touch on it today, and that is the Act provides a property tax exemption for affordable housing developments, specifically for those that have UNETS, or units, uh, serving families at 120% of the area median income or below. So, if they have 40% of their units in a project development serving those households, they can receive property tax exemptions for those units. Some counties have the option to opt out of that property tax exemption, but that's only if they have a surplus of affordable rentals. That determination comes to us from the Schim, the Schimberg Center for Housing Studies, and opting out requires two-thirds majority vote of the, uh, taxing authority board. Flagler County does not have the option to, to, uh, opt out. We currently have a deficit of affordable rental units. So, in the Schimberg Center's housing report, they found that Flagler County had roughly 750 units less than it did households at that area median income threshold. And as such, we were not able to opt out of, of that.
When will we get the next Schimberg? How is that quarterly, monthly, annual?
It's an annual, it's an annual report typically at the end of the year, I believe, a calendar year. So, December-ish this year. So, this imbalance or deficit reinforces the need to focus on expanding housing options in our area, as affordability remains a challenge in the community. Key housing resources and, and information to consider, uh, the team and I use this a lot. There's the Florida Housing Coalition, their website is listed there. They provide an array of technical assistance, training, policy guidance, and the like, specifically also on the Live Local Act. They host an array of webinars and information that staff and I tapped into, to make sure that we are meeting expectations of the legislation that I mentioned earlier. Uh, and in addition is also the Schimberg Center for Housing Studies. They're, uh, I guess a department or part of the University of Florida, uh, family, and they provide an extensive amount of research and data on Florida's housing market generally, and also, uh, in terms of Flagler County. And again, their annual report helps inform, uh, whether counties can opt out of, of the exempt, tax exemption. Local housing policy as it relates to the, the path ahead. Um, so our goal in, in having this conversation and bringing these incentives to you is to look at what are the key opportunities to discuss housing policy and improvement in our community? What are the challenges? How can we improve clarity and alignment with state goals? What feedback or ideas do you have as a committee, uh, or a commission to strengthen the committee's approach? The goal today is to, to refine some of the areas of focus in those incentives that I'll bring back up momentarily. And then again, in September, come back, the workshop in between now and September, um, the committee will take those, review them, find the ones that they want to promote and bring back to the board in the fall. Um, again, for your consideration and vote. Um, this discussion is crucial to, uh, steering the committee's priorities and ensuring that housing policies support Flagler County's needs. The committee welcomes your input, and I will, uh, ask if we can get us back to the slide with the incentives on it, so that we can welcome any feedback on those. One. Couple more. There. Oop, that one. State recommended housing, and I'm sorry, folks.
Amy, did you put together a slide that had, uh, last year's recommendations from December?
Ah, oof, I did not put one on here. Um, I could try...
Because that's like the starting point. That's, that's where we gave you clearance on, on majority of those items that were brought to us.
Yes, yes. So, there were 10 items that the board approved. Um, we've developed an action or an implementation plan for those. Some of them are shorter-term, uh, goals that we can accomplish, uh, in the coming months. Some of them are longer-term. Um, you know, some examples involve, you know, updates to the comprehensive plan and land development code and those kinds of things, which are longer-term projects. Uh, but again, things like, uh, Live Local ordinance, updating the web... They host an array of webinars and information that staff and I tapped into to make sure that we are meeting expectations of the legislation that I mentioned earlier. And in addition is also the Schimberg Center for Housing Studies. They're, I guess, a department or part of the University of Florida family. And they provide an extensive amount of research and data on Florida's housing market generally and also in terms of Flagler County. And again, their annual report helps inform whether counties can opt out of the tax exemption. Local housing policy as it relates to the path ahead. So our goal in having this conversation and bringing these incentives to you is to look at what are the key opportunities to discuss housing policy and improvement in our community? What are the challenges? How can we improve clarity and alignment with state goals? What feedback or ideas do you have as a committee or a commission to strengthen the committee's approach? The goal today is to refine some of the areas of focus in those incentives that I'll bring back up momentarily. And then again, in September, come back, the workshop in between now and September, the committee will take those, review them, find the ones that they want to promote and bring back to the board in the fall. Again, for your consideration and vote. This discussion is crucial to steering the committee's priorities and ensuring that housing policies support Flagler County's needs. The committee welcomes your input. And I will ask if we can get us back to the slide with the incentives on it so that we can welcome any feedback on those. Couple more. There. That one. State recommended housing, sorry folks.
Did you put together a slide that had last year's recommendations from December?
Ah, oof, I did not put one on here.
Because that's like the starting point. That's where we gave you clearance on a majority of those items that were brought to us.
Yes, yes. So there were 10 items that the board approved. We've developed an action or an implementation plan for those. Some of them are shorter-term goals that we can accomplish in the coming months. Some of them are longer-term. You know, some examples involve, you know, updates to the comprehensive plan and land development code and those kinds of things, which are longer-term projects. But again, things like Live Local ordinance, updating the website, expedited review and permitting, those are things are cooking right now and we hope to have those implemented, you know, in the coming months, if not sooner. But unfortunately, I did not bring a slide of those.
Well, yeah, but the one we got hung up on is your third point, where we need to show impact on our decision-making policy ordinances on the cost of housing. So not everything we do, right, has a cost to a house or housing or the general public. So we're kind of stuck on that. We don't know how we can get, meet the requirement, but not overburden staff or get the commission to agree that it has to be done. I mean, how do we get that done? Nobody in the state tells us how to do it. They just want us to do it.
So let me get this straight. What's in front of us? This is the Live Local, part of the Live Local Act? Some of these components are, but is this like outside of the Live Local Act? What you're recommending here?
A little bit of both. So the incentives appear on the screen. These are just the general incentives that the state puts forth for consideration by counties. I'm sorry?
This is the state?
The Florida Housing Coalition, sorry. So they gather up a bunch of housing incentives. Now, some of them are tied to Live Local, but the ones that are tied to Live Local are really a matter of we have to implement and how do, you know, how do we do it? These are more up for debate or consideration, I guess.
So we can take any of this into consideration or none at all? Is that what you're saying?
Yes. Now, to the one that Commissioner Carney raised earlier, that is a state mandated requirement that we assess impacts to housing costs in our community. Currently, we meet that mandate by staff reviewing kind of the end of the year, you know, different policies and procedures circling up with growth management, legal. Hey, what did we adopt these years in terms of new policies, right? Tree ordinances, whatever it might be. And does that have a financial impact to housing development? If that, if none, then we check a box and send it off to the state. The recommendation of the committee was to add something a little more beefy to agenda items, where essentially every agenda item would either say, yes, this has no cost or this has a X dollar cost or whatever it might be. I think the feedback we received then is it seemed kind of vague in how that cost was determined, right? So maybe creating some framework or rubric to determine what those costs are could be a way to try and fill that.
I have a quick question. In the town center, there were many apartment buildings that were built for affordable housing. Are they still considered in this?
So in terms of...
Assess or not? Were those just thrown to the wrong?
Yes and no. So they are part of the countywide number of affordable units that are considered. So when I talked about if we have a deficit in the county of units versus need, they are incorporated there. But having already been developed, they're not really going to be affected by new policies that we implement going forward, right? So it's a, yes, they're counted, but they wouldn't be impacted by anything new that's coming down the pike. That said, you know, the Live Local Act creates a pathway for affordable housing development on, you know, mixed-use properties and those kinds of things. So there could be other development in that area that is impacted by these incentives, for sure.
And in like blighted areas of redevelopment, would that be part of it or?
It could be, yes. I mean, if a developer came in and had an interest in pursuing a project there, there's potential for sure.
Okay, thank you.
And the committee, we also had presentations by several affordable housing, workforce housing developers. And what used to be, well, what probably still is a problem in Flagler County, not, I mean, good for us, not for them, is our price of land. So the cost of land is keeping some of this development out of here, basically. But once Live Local started, all bets are off. So even like this demolition, I mean, you probably all got the email, don't rezone that where the motel is for affordable housing. We don't have any control over that. So if that goes flat and the gentleman that owns it wants to build, well, that's probably a bad example because, what was it, a three-story building or a two-story building? How big was that motel?
Well, it was only two. But you're correct, if an affordable project wanted to come in there, there would be no public hearing. It would have to be approved administratively. Impact fees would be waived, expedited permitting.
And the newest thing, if it goes through the legislative on the Live Local, is that if a developer says he's going to do affordable, but it doesn't get built, the tax exemption starts when the application comes in.
Retro, yes.
So that piece of land can be...
And in Flagler County, Endeavori can, I think this is the last meeting, affordable housing in Flagler County is $2,000 a month.
Yeah, so two bedrooms is affordable, $2,000 a month.
Just to clarify, the tax exemption only applies to the affordable units. So any market rate units would be taxed regularly. It's just the affordable component.
But can't they also build up to one and a half times the largest building that's within so many miles from their focal point?
There is some nuance, yes, in terms of distance to the other tallest building and that sort of thing. Kind of the default there is three stories unless there's something, I think, within a mile that's taller and then they could potentially go that height.
I guess my question is, what here is not covered by the Live Local that a developer could do without this board that we would, should really consider? Because I think six of the eight are in the Live Local now, right? I mean, basically.
Yes, and part of this is, Live Local is up for, you know, review again and potentially could be changing one more time. So we're kind of shape-shifting as we go to a degree. But yes, I think all of these could be tied, most of them could be tied into...
I look at ADU. I don't think ADUs are covered in Live Local.
ADU.
Right, and accessory dwelling.
But it is in our ordinance.
Oh, yeah.
We do have an ordinance. And the ADU, I think we need to spread our ordinance out a little bit, don't we? Don't we have to allow stoves or something that we don't, that we don't have right now?
Uh, that is a good question. I don't know about the county side. I know on the city side, there's some restrictions.
Oh, the cities got a long way from ADU. But we're not too far away from ADU that we can't do something with that. So that would be a focal area, would be, and again, I'm hearing it's going to be mandated, so I don't...
There is a bill pending and it seems to have movement on accessory dwelling.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, it's going to go.
Yes, it could be somewhat moot.
Who am I doing here, right?
It's going to go, exactly.
Maybe we'll be ahead of the curve, who knows?
My question is, I know we've, again, we approved a list of recommendations back in December. Why are these not vetted through AHAQ and then brought back to us in December? Why do we have to do this now?
So I think this is just an initial glance at the incentives that will go to the committee. We didn't want to blindside folks in December and say, hey, these are the incentives we've been looking at all year. We wanted to give you kind of a first shot, say, these might be a priority or don't do, look at this or whatever it is.
And an invitation to come visit AHAQ and hear a little bit about the conversations that go on.
Always welcome, always welcome, for sure.
Well, not only that, Palm Coast had so many new commissioners, they've had a turnover. So actually, the committee recommended that we meet with Palm, and do this as one meeting. But Palm Coast decided to do their AHAQ presentation separately and not wait until the one meeting they get in front of the board to help us with some education, right? That was basically the goal for today.
Yes, so the original intent was a joint meeting. That didn't quite work out. So I hope the city, I hope the city staff will take a similar presentation and get their council feedback as well.
Yeah, because I mean, some of this may be, I mean, let's wait till after and see what shakes out after legislative session and what's new. But it's good to know what other recommendations are out there.
So would, I do a quick question. Would the ADUs apply to individual home building? Or is this really just with a, look at a developer?
No, it could apply to a single-family homeowner or bigger.
I thought that's what it was. You put a little...
Yeah, like a mother-in-law, but you can't do that really.
Mother-in-law suite or whatever over on the side of it. Yeah, yeah. But it could be a separate building also, small little house, tiny house.
We just, I don't feel like we allow tiny homes right now for the individualist.
No, we have a square foot limit.
Talking about out in Daytona North or anywhere, we don't allow for a tiny home to go in now.
That would be something to attack because if you're going to allow ADUs, you have to do something about the square footage because we have a rule now that says it can only be X.
And I don't want to speak for my partners in growth management, but I believe that's part of what they're looking at in terms of the comprehensive plan update and land development code is really beefing up that ADU picture or plan or whatever you want to call that.
But that would not include the city of Palm Coast?
No, the city would have to enact their...
Because I believe theirs is 1,200 square feet.
They would have to enact and review their own, yeah.
One of the items that came up was the inventory of available lots, but we never had a procedure for how somebody could inquire, apply, or pay for these available lots. Did we work that out? Did we get anywhere with that?
It is in process. That's one of the things I was referring to when we were talking about updating our website. So we'll include that, the application, some of the statutes, language, and some other points of reference for a developer to be able to kind of figure out the path.
Is there any piece of this that talks about low-income housing being all centered in one spot? Or is it spread around? You know, is there something that prevents it from being all jammed into one spot?
Well, in terms of the Live Local Act, I believe our projects would, because we only have so much industrial commercially zoned land, projects proposed for those sites would have to be a mixed-use development. So there would be a mix of business and affordable housing. Also, they only need to do 60, or excuse me, 40% of the units as affordable. So theoretically, up to 60% of the units could be a market rate or even beyond, yeah.
Yeah, I hate to say it, but that, we're tearing down that motel. That actually, that actually works. I mean, it actually works. That's a good spot.
There's potential for sure.
All we have to do is name it after Jane.
Yeah, that's it.
But it could be, it could be a very healthy little village center type of thing.
It really could be. I mean, that's a really good location.
With entryway, if it's done with flair and style, it would be very, very popular.
Well, I see the Live Local completely different. Almost a large amount of counties are opting out every day that can't opt in and we can't. That's what I'm saying, but we, but it's, I don't, I suspect that this will be difficult if this starts coming in for us to handle. And I wish it was affordable. I don't, I don't think $2,000 a month is affordable. And there's, the newest study that was out about a week ago said that they're not finding any impact by Live Local for affordable housing. If anything, it's just impacting the bottom lines of counties. It's restricting.
Gloria, I could see that impact.
Yeah.
I will say the Florida, I missed the webinar recently, but the Florida Housing Coalition did put together a webinar about Live Local projects that are being, you know, in various stages of the pipeline and that kind of thing. So we can take a look at that and see what impacts there.
I think we've got two coming, right, that I know of on Old Kings? And they seem encouraging because I think they were senior housing and they were actually affordable.
Yes, and those are the city of Palm Coast, but yes.
Yeah, the ones that we came through here, but...
Absolutely, yeah.
But I know it can be, Orange County is opting out now. And it just keeps adding. Columbia County, it's like every day.
You mean, we can opt out of the Live Local?
Not right now. We are about, what, 750 units short?
Roughly, yes.
Right.
What if they were to build eight-plexes? And, you know, nobody here has been doing that. And that's all over bigger cities when they have no space. If you've got only just so much space, you can build units that are attached via a carport that are attached, so it's like one big build. You can get eight, you can get four, four, four. There's so many other types, they're just not going outside of their box here. And I don't understand, it does accommodate much more, much more size.
Flagler Beach is a small one.
Yeah, the issue on those is how do you, if you build them as low-income housing, then if they're affordable to buy, then what happens when he wants to sell it? Then it's outside of the realm of affordable housing.
Well, you either have a choice to get the affordable housing or you don't. Then it would have to go to the same person who would, you'd have to have somebody qualify to be able to purchase that prop, you know, to go into that property. It's not that really...
There are some, depending on the funding mechanism. So if it's funded through the state, there's income restrictions and, you know, for 30 years, they have to be affordable. So there'll be deed restrictions and the like. But it depends on the project and how it's financed and some of those factors.
So I'll defer to you. You think the recommendation is to allow this go through the Affordable Housing Committee?
I think we have a, they have a large list of things that we approved back in December. I think we wait for the legislative, see what comes up. Come back maybe after legislative session is over to review changes to housing. And maybe that'll give us some guidance on these, these other issues. But I think we got plenty, I think staff has plenty of work that we gave them back in December.
And just first glance, these eight things are worth considering, all of them. I mean, they're worth considering, they're worth taking on, so.
They're definitely potential tools for the tool belt, for sure.
And I think Mr. Moylan, what's the status or what are the plans for the ordinance on Live Local?
Staff has recently spoke about that. It's forthcoming.
Okay, so we've got that too. Anything else?
No, that's all from the board. I appreciate the time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you again, Endeavori in the back. I'll open it for public comment. Any public comment on affordable housing?
Raymond Royer, Panthers Hill. I filed an application to be on that committee and still waiting on the approval. But as a veteran, I deal with a lot of homeless veterans out there. I talk to them, I feed them, you know, stop at restaurants, feed them, get to know a little better about them. I'd like to see some of this housing. I don't know if that's part of the 10 or eight list that you put in, you know, proposed in December. But the veterans need help, you know, they're high on the list for homelessness and they have other disabilities. So I'd like to see some of these homes try to reach that goal to help our veterans out. And I like the idea that they're going to go to a mixed complex because that's what I'm kind of looking at, where we might have a psychiatrist there on house, you know, a doctor, you know, opening a facility up, you know, help these people out so they don't have to do transportation all the time to get to their needs that they need really bad. So as a veteran, I'd like to get on the committee in the future to help establish for the VA, you know, help out. And there's a lot of nonprofit organizations. If we can get a nice partial land, you know, and provide the land to them, like these veterans that are nonprofit will build a home for free. I mean, you got to look at it that way. I mean, there's, there's over a dozen organizations that will build homes for free. And there's church associations too that will build housing, you know. And the president that just passed away, Mr. Carter, you know, he was in that, you know, program then, you know, building houses for free. So you don't have to look at, you know, get vision tunnel. There's ways to make this happen. And when I attended the meeting for the low housing, I was shocked. Well, not, I wasn't really shocked, but the 750, you know, that we're down that far. And it's just going to keep continuing growing as we, you know, grow ourselves. It's going, that number's going to grow. So, yeah, this guy's got another project in his hands that is very, it's going to be time-consuming. And trying to get it right the first time is going to be the most important thing to get it right. to get it right the first time off the, off the program. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other public comment? All right, bring it back.
Can I just make a comment about AHAQ? Just so you know, AHAQ's goal is not to build affordable housing. AHAQ's goal is to work with, on incentives and work with the state on how to get developers to come and build the affordable housing. But it is, I don't believe it's in the preview of the board or the county to be in the development business. We, we specifically, every meeting, talk about how the state money is spent and how we're going to be in compliance with the state requirements. But we don't, we don't brainstorm on how to build these, these homes or these requirements, these required living spaces. That is up to a developer to do that.
Okay, thank you.
But it doesn't preclude us from being, using our land to be in a pub partnership with a developer for low-income housing. So that's always out there. Has to be in the right spot. Okay. Very good, thank you, Mr. Hegelis. Appreciate that. Next up, comprehensive plan discussion. Housing and future land use. It's the housing workshop.
Adam Mangle, Growth Management Director. Just wanted to very quickly, on the feedback you had had last time we brought this forward. Simone Kenny is going to do the presentation. She had gone to AHAQ, provided the last iteration of the housing element along with the, kind of, just listed their comments. We were also looking then for other comments from others just prolonging that review of the housing element. She'll report that to you. And then we're going to talk about future land use element. And I think you had asked for all of this to come back again. We're, we're open if you want to have another workshop. Our next step with this, as we've structured it, as we planned before, was to review it in chunks. Planning board's done the same. Y'all had had it where you weren't getting it all together. But I think you had requested that it comes back again. We're certainly open to do that. We can come back for another workshop. Our next step would be transmittal hearing at this point. Because in, in our world, planning board's reviewed it, you've reviewed it, we've got feedback. We've got certainly some edits maybe that are still running through. And so what we'll do is we'll work on those, getting those ready for, for that final review. And then what we would do then is we would have a transmittal hearing, transmit the entirety of the comprehensive plan to the state reviewing agencies. Way that process works then, there's a, a review period for them. And then we clear that out. They may or may not issue what's known as ORC report, objections, recommendations, and comments. If they do come back with comments, we review those. We then make other edits, eventually leads to adoption. And so we're looking at potentially another four, five, maybe six months, depending on the next steps that you have here for us. If we, we can certainly come back with, with more workshops, not just one, but we can certainly come back again for as many as you need. But today, housing, that, that last, second review then on housing and then future land use element. Here's Simone. Thank you.
And, and just about next steps. I think Commissioner Carney had raised the issue of, of having a more comprehensive look instead of element by element or something and step in, but that there needed to be some additional time because of the length of the document and the importance that we, that we at least put our eyes one more time on it. Is that okay? Okay.
It's, it's not bad to have everything back into its full context. We, we knew before and both board before and planning board had said, don't give us it all at once. We can't do that.
Right.
And so we broke it up into the chunks intentionally. And it's not, it's not, it's not uncommon for us to come back then with the entirety of it. Remember, you're going to get it one more time because we got transmittal. You will see it all together then. We have no choice. It has to be transmitted as a single complete document at that point.
That'll make that second one easier.
Yes, yes.
Good afternoon, Commissioner.
Good afternoon.
Simone Kenny, planner. I think we're at the point now where I can really gloss over the background and what the comprehensive plan is. Our vision statement again. Our vision directives. So I did present on the housing element at the last workshop. And then in between then and now, I brought it back to AHAQ so they could look at it one more time. They have requested to see it one more time at their meeting. Again, just to reiterate, the purpose is to ensure that Flagler County regulates residential development in a manner that can equitably, efficiently, and effectively meet the housing needs of the communities existing and projected populations. So as not to really recount all, the whole presentation from last time, I just highlighted the main comments that they had. They didn't really have a, a ton of feedback on the policies themselves, wanting those changed. They just had some comments on the particular language that was used. For example, in policy housing, housing policy 1.3.4, referencing affordable housing developers rather than the Flagler County Housing Authority, which really only has the one project now in Benel. And then in objective housing 1.4, they wanted to confirm that target populations is a term that's used regularly. And it is the term that's referenced in Florida statutes in chapter 420. And then finally, in, in policy 1.4.2, they wanted to change a family of four to household when referencing, comparing household incomes to the median. And that was primarily the only comments or changes requested by the AHAQ. And that modified version of the housing element was provided to you in the backup. Then moving on to our final element, which is a future land use, purpose of which is to determine the distribution, location, and intensity of uses necessary for accommodating the unincorporated area's projected population growth, advance its economic interests, minimize impacts to the natural economy, and deliver high-quality public facilities and services to residents of the county. While all the vision directives that were identified by the public are related specifically to the future land use, the ones that we heard most common in this specific element was concentrating future growth to existing urban areas, conserving the natural environment, cultivating a more affordable and diverse housing market, and then preserving rural charm and character and supporting our existing agricultural industries. So all of this came together for our overall goal for the future land use, which is to cultivate, cultivate diverse, complete communities in a manner which minimizes impacts to natural resources and agricultural lands. This element has eight total objectives. The two that I highlighted that were the most modified and/or are brand new are objective 1.3, which is to facilitate the creation of mixed-use communities in neighborhoods where residential and non-residential uses are harmoniously collated and integrated into a sustainable development pattern. And then objective 1.5, which was to support agricultural operations and preserve the rural character found within the unincorporated area. So here I have the newly proposed residential or non-residential intensity standards and residential density standards. Our overall residential densities are the same as they have been. They're not being increased. And the staff had came together and we discussed with our consultant our non-residential, so our commercial and industrial uses. So in this case, the low intensity has been proposed to increase from point three to point five for FAR, which is our floor area ratio. And just to give some background on that, that is the area or total square footage of your building, even if there's multiple floors in proportion or divided by the total square footage of the lot. Again, that still has to meet all the setbacks and open space requirements that are still dictated in our land development code. And commercial high intensity was proposed to increase from point four to three. That is a pretty large jump. However, the standard for commercial high intensity in other jurisdictions is anywhere from three to 10. That was on the lower end. And then our industry, we propose to increase from point three to two. I know we did receive comments from the A1A scenic pride committee pertaining to those things. So this is obviously still up for discussion and at the discretion of the board. But the intent was one, to encourage more commercial and industrial development and to do so in a way that can be done on smaller, more compact lots and allow the developers, in some instances, to be able to build up rather than out and to prevent or limit encroaching on our other types of land uses. And then in related to our, our mixed-use objective, there's a couple policies that when amending the future land use map, the county would consider opportunities to bring commercial and office uses in closer proximity with residential areas to reduce lengths of trips in the county. And that the county would consider standards in the LDC to expand allowable housing types to accommodate a wider variety. Kind of linking this back to the presentation that you just heard. One instance would be the ADUs. That was a, a policy in our housing element. Our initial goal or timeline would be that we would include that ordinance in our future land use or, in our land development code update. However, with this Senate bill that is making progress, there could be a deadline that we have to adopt an ordinance by the end of the year. So in that specific case, that might be pushed up. And then there was another recommendation for AHAQ from the state about zero lot lines. The way that we interpret that is that would enable for town home development, where you have, you know, the dwellings that are abutting each other are sharing a wall but are built on the individual lots and are legally considered single-family residences. I think in that case though, by building code, they're technically considered multifamily just for fire code reasons, firewalls and protection. But those are the, the types of strategies that this policy is looking towards. And then policy one.
On this slide, I think we're going to run into a conflict on the 80% maximum impervious area. You know, we had a taste of that with the BJ's out parcels, but that was with a common retention area. And I think with additional modifications to tree protection and stuff, I don't know. I think, I think 80% is going to be unrealistic. Might, we might need to just dig into that a little bit to make sure it's realistic. At this point, I'm going to venture to say that's not a realistic goal.
Okay.
Down. Yeah.
Yeah, we can look back to, to 70. So we'll discuss that. But I think there's also an opportunity where maybe there's a caveat where you can go up to 80
Potential.
if you have a, a master plan drainage system. So we will clarify and specify that. And then policy 1.3.6, that the county would consider standards that allow for reduced residential lot sizes when close to commercial or office destinations. And that the county would consider standards for businesses and crossroads in or near residential development that would help these uses coexist harmoniously with the existing development patterns. The intent with these policies is that much of our housing stock in the county is pretty isolated and very far from services. Believe everybody from the western end of the portion really does have to come to here to State Road 100, and that's adding the congestion. You know, there's very limited grocery stores out west. So this would potentially allow or, or start to pave the way for having more localized neighborhood commercial services in those areas. So that's the intention with that.
So do we pick on these smaller lot sizes in our, in our land use LDRs? Do we choose what types of commercial and office businesses are there?
Yeah, so that's specified in the.
Would be specified, okay.
In the LDC in our zoning designations.
Question on the chart. Maximum density per gross acre. So that's, you're subtracting wetlands or conservation area? Or is it the gross, gross acre? So it's the entire boundary? Okay.
Say that again.
So the, the total density standards, it's calculated at the gross acreage. So if you have wetlands or other unbudable portions of the property, those would still be calculated in except for any land within your parcel that has a future land use designation of conservation already.
So you can still get, just the point, I guess. You can still get very small lot development. And I'll use Radiance as an example. But there's a lot of existing wetlands that were retained on the site.
Right.
So they're, they have to put those densities within only the buildable areas. And if they try to meet the three units per acre, they end up shrinking the lot size to get their density. So it looks like it's a higher-density project, but when you consider the overall acreage of the parcel.
It's not.
It's not.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
And then this one is a lengthy policy, but I'll try to summarize it as best I can. This is policy 1.5.1. And the intent of this policy is really to add more protections to our agricultural lands and really just kind of adds requirements or a level of analysis needed to change the future land use of agricultural lands to, say, residential low density or anything. And it states that the county shall not amend the land use plan to change the land use classification of agricultural and timberland production areas if the amendment contributes to any of the following conditions. Again, that's quite a lengthy list. So A, again, referencing our, ideally, our intra-local joint planning commission or not commission, committee. And the potential, if we do end up adopting an interlocal service boundary agreement, that that would be a, quite a definitive boundary line for future land use changes in the future. That we wouldn't change the future land use of AG if it would permit substantial areas of the county to develop as residential development in excess of demonstrated need, fails to adequately protect and conserve natural resources as a result of a premature or poorly planned conversion of rural land, fails to provide a clean separation between rural and urban uses, et cetera, et cetera. I believe the intent and implementation of this is that we would include it in our staff reports of any future agricultural land use amendment proposals. And we would go step by step, staff would, and, and provide an answer or an analysis for each of these points. Any questions on this one? Again, these are a couple more policies in support of protecting our current agricultural activities. Saying the county would work with farmers and the agricultural community to assist landowners and farmers with preserving high-quality agricultural lands through government or private programs or grants. Again, that could look like our Conservation Eastments or Florida Forever is one program. Just kind of on the staff end, doing more research into those, providing that information to agricultural landowners in a more systematic or formal way. The county shall protect agricultural and rural resources and ensure that conflicts between agricultural lands and non-agricultural uses will be resolved in favor of the agricultural interest by ensuring that all buffering, screening, and protective measures identified in the LDC are required of the owners of non-agricultural uses. And then we have now kind of steering towards the barrier island side. The private recreation-oriented developments on major water bodies shall be rezoned PUD. That gives us quite a bit more control over the layout and design as well as the protection of wetlands, water quality, stormwater management, and wildlife resources. I do believe we received a question on whether this would impact or relate current applications for on-the-water recreation. It would not, it would not be retroactive. But moving forward, hopefully, making that process. But moving forward, hopefully, making that process a much clearer. And then finally, on this slide, the development of coastal Flagler County is nearing buildout. So that, again, that the county would coordinate with the other municipalities to direct the future of urban development west of US Highway 1 and in areas that can be adequately served by urban services. Again, this is just linking it back one more time to our intergovernmental element and our goal of working more closely and having a joint committee with the planners of the other jurisdictions on getting a better understanding and collaborating on the direction of growth.
Ms. Simone, the program with the best, the soccer fields and so forth, does that fit into this, that project that we just talked about at the beginning of this workshop? Does that fit into this scheme any way, shape, or form?
I would think so. I think that was a jointly sought-after program by both the city and the county. And if we had had our, our joint committee established at the time, it would have been a, a topic at that point.
To our future land use, it would, it would be, because it's future land use, it's not current. Right?
Right.
And the infrastructure, I think the component that validates it is the infrastructure that's going to be built, the road, the overpass. That, that's going out that way.
Just asking.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Again, reiterating pretty much the same concept for the timing and provisions of urban services to the west study area of the county. I will have a map on the next slide showing how the county is, is broken up into different study areas. Right now, we have the east, which is the barrier island, the central area, and then the west, which is everything west of US 1. Again, that the development of lands west of highway, of US Highway 1 would not occur unless there's sufficient public facilities, solid waste collection, stormwater management systems, fire and police protection, emergency medical services. And the county would ensure that the adopted level of service, again, which are adopted in our capital improvements element, are enforced within districts by facility type. And then again, for the east study area, which in this case is the barrier island, the county would continue to coordinate development review and land use decisions with all governmental agencies, including the Dunes Community Development District. And then staying on the barrier island side, that the county would or may use the Guana Tolamato Matanzas National Estuary Research Reserve Management Plan in our review of amendments to the comprehensive plan, the zoning map, and the LDC. And that the county shall develop design standards in our LDC to encourage village centers as a method of discouraging strip commercial development. I know there were some more questions about that and about how that would look. Again, that would be more so decided in our LDC. On, you know, do we, if we need, if we, should we determine we need to increase parking requirements, buffering setbacks? Again, that would all be part of the, the LDC process. And again, that the county would, on a continuing basis, review and amend the LDC to incorporate changes made to other county planning documents and studies.
Did you, did you say that that's kind of focused on the barrier island? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, so this policy would fall under the east study area, which is the, the barrier island. Yes.
Well, they've tried. They had a charrette design out there. And, and none of it works because the lots are so small. And unless you buy several of them and mash them together. Yeah, that, that's hard. The village centers, that was their, their kind of goal from the start was they would have some village centers out there, but it's really failed. That, that thought has failed because of land use, what people have done with the land. Although it's going to change with the sewer. There might be some incentive to mash some of those lots together once they have sewer and they don't have to worry on, worry about septic. But yeah, okay. Just, that's tough.
Yeah, I think we determine that it is a challenge, but as conditions change, it's worth still having it in there so we can routinely reevaluate that until, hopefully, the point where it does become feasible.
Village Centers was a concept that Palm Coast used in their comp plan. Has that been effective? Have we been able to look and see if it's followed suit?
Well, they tried in Town Center, right? I mean, they're trying in Town Center to do that. But it's out of our control.
I know they clustered them at intersections, so, but you end up with strip centers at the intersection. So I don't know that, that, we'll have to look. If it, if it comes down to the LDC, we'll have to see how it, how we put that in effect. Because I, I don't know that Palm Coast's version has been successful.
Our, our original plans, from what I've been told, were each little section, each little loop would have its own little store, like villages. And there's, there's one, and it's really just a gas station, so. They thought it would have like 7-11s and things like that. So that's where, when you look at 25 years from now, is that going to even be available?
No, it is, it is a very tricky bridge to walk. Because on the one hand, you have your land development regulations, and on the other hand, you have what the market wants. And I think at the time and in the history of Palm Coast, a lot of that was, was reoriented towards residential development. But we will try. Okay, and just for your reference, on the left-hand side, we have our study areas. Again, that's broken up to the barrier island, which is the east study area. You have the central, which is in between the intercoastal and US 1. And then you have the west study area, which is everything that's west of US 1. And on the right-hand side is our current future land use map. And how it looks in this version.
So is the, is the green on Old Kings Road south of 100? Is the, the green area between Old Kings and US 1 and 95, is that the dump?
Where are you looking?
Or the, the old dump is that? Yeah, the more triangular piece.
It's just interesting how the, you know, now that enclaves is a word that we're, use all the time, it's how funny how they all pop out now.
Yeah, especially when you put them in.
Look at that study area map. Look at that study area map with all those little dots. Looks like chickenpox in Benel.
Mm-hmm.
Well, Al brought that up. He said, you know, we have multiple of those in Benel.
That's just silly. We got some out on the west, too.
Yeah, so for the, I would say almost 90% of these, maybe even 100%, emerged because of, you know, voluntary annexations from the property owners.
Try representing this area. I feel like I have to go to the tax collector first and look up their code. See, oh, no, you're in the city of Benel. Sorry. No, it's bad. They call it Swiss cheese.
Can you go back real quick? Industrial. Okay, there it is. So that US 1, that purple, fuchsia pink, that US 1 section down there is in the county or is not in the county?
There's a couple parcels there that are in the county. And then as that triangular area narrows down a little bit, that is the city of Benel.
Okay. So for the city of Benel or Flagler County to develop those industrial areas, we need services, correct? There's no services down there right now?
Quite a few of those parcels are served by the city of Benel.
Oh, the city of Benel. Okay. So maybe we need to go further down. Let's go down to.
And then you'll see down.
The Peach area.
On US 1, yep, there's the Peach area.
That's Plantation Bay.
Okay, so I must be thinking about the fuchsia on the bend on that little area.
So that's industrial.
Yep.
That one doesn't have any, there's no services to that. And then again, across the street from Plantation Bay, from the, the orange, there's a little strip there that's kind of a mix of industrial and commercial, and that doesn't have services either.
But if we had agreements with the Plantation Bay facility, we could have services?
That would be FGUA.
Yeah.
I can't recall if we've had.
Kim, this is where we're trying to get water to.
Right, so how do we get water there?
We need that grant to go through. That's why everybody always talks about, why is there no growth in Favoretta? And that's, we have no, no water, but that's grant's still outstanding.
But where would we get the water from? We don't have any wells.
FGUA.
Right, but we can't enter into an agreement with them.
Yeah.
Bring, how about the sewer line? We got to bring a sewer line in and a water line? Okay.
We're, we're holding out for that.
I just had a quick question. My computer just, darn it. There is a mention, this is like way at the very beginning, there is mention as to providing new sites. Hold on, maybe that, I answered my own question. Oh, darn it. Why do I need a 20-stroke password?
Because it's safe.
I mean, I, I know, I know, nobody wants my craziness. So under FLU 115, it says, Flagler County shall encourage the continued development and improvement of appropriate existing industrial sites, hence my question, while also providing sites, new sites for industrial development. Where might those be? In that magical hat of?
Ideally, if we, if we were to get the, the grant and the sewer line and water line, that area that we have a little bit of commercial could potentially be expanded slightly.
Okay.
That have more sites.
We'd have to buy it. We don't owe it, we don't own it, right?
That's correct. So for industrial development, that doesn't necessarily have to be public-led. You know, that could be just private developers who, who.
Okay.
I think the dilemma we face is everything east of US 1 is infill, basically. The comment's been made, it's, it's highly residential. If you go to the west of the railroad tracks for any industrial, you have to cross US 1, you have to fly over the railroad tracks to get back to US 1. And it's a, Palm Coast just figured out how costly it is to go over the railroad tracks. And that's, we just can't do a small industrial parcel. It would have to be a big industrial park that merited the cost to be able to fly over the railroad tracks in US 1 and tie back in. So we've got our work cut out for us because, you know, doing this now is, we're finding is futile because this was a project for Fidler County back in the 60s and 70s.
So our, our biggest hope for industrial or any type of shared tax with commercial base or industrial base is right here at the airport. Right? So that's where we, that's where we would have to focus, is anything that could go with.
Well, don't we still have a possibility? And I don't know how we do it, but still, US 1, as it gets south towards Volusia, that's a, that's a good spot.
Right.
Okay.
That's a good spot.
And again, this is just a little note. In the next one, policy FLU 116, there's a word in there that I could not find. It's P R O F F E R E D. I think that's not a word.
Crawford?
Yeah, something. I, I can't understand it. Page 5, policy 124, I had a question. All these charts with all these lands on it, they stay as part of this plan?
Yeah, those are, these are parcel limiting policies.
Yeah.
They're part of the future land use of that property, and they run with the land.
Until they annex into the city.
That's correct.
Until they annex. There you go. That's a good answer. Hold on. This document is hard. 1.24, protect portable water wellfields. Okay, so we don't have any wells because we don't have any utilities. But it's our obligation to protect those that, like Flagler Beach's wells that are in our city limits. And it says to limit the types of activities that can occur on them. Do we, I mean, aren't they well-marked? I mean, don't, don't people know where these wells are?
So that really just means that we have it explicitly outlined in our LDC where we have a certain setback requirement from the wellfields. I think, what is it, 1,000 feet? From wellheads, 500 to 1,000 feet. It's just explicitly called out in our land development code.
And when the wells are no longer used, because they abandoned the wells after a while, do we put them back on the books as, or change them at all? It's okay. And then the last one is on page 8, FLU 1211. It says that Flagler County shall continue to administer land development regulations which protect viable wetlands and sensitive ecological communities identified in the conservation areas. How do we do that?
So on the future land use map on the right side, the sort of darker neon green, those are all designated conservation on our future land use map. Those have a density of zero. You're not allowed to build on them and touch them. And, and it's just emphasizing that we wouldn't allow development to occur on these areas marked conservation on our future land use map. These conservation areas came from a wetland study, I believe in 2004.
But there were other wetlands than what's on this map.
That's correct. And so other wetland protections that aren't called out explicitly in our future land use map, again, have certain protections through the St. John's River Water Management District. They have regulations we have to comply with.
I think that's going to come up more under the LDRs anyway because I know Flagler Beach is looking at stricter rules when you're developing AE as opposed to obviously X. So, but I, I think they're getting assistance with that through, through St. St. John's Water Management.
But I think that's, the bane of my existence is that we defer to the Water Management District for all wetland permitting. And that's, that's something we'll have time to look at.
All right, so to wrap up, it sounds like we have consensus to have another workshop, a more comprehensive with all the elements together with their edits and comments that we received throughout this month and a half, two months of, of workshops. I think we'll need to discuss with staff which workshop that'll be. Maybe the next one, potentially the one after, just to have time to compile everything together and to make sure that you have ample time to. together and to make sure that you have ample time to at least skim through everything before the workshop itself.
I think it's a good plan anyway, because, like you said, transmittal's going to be the full thing anyway, so let's look at it one step beforehand and, and if there was still any changes or modifications that have come along the way.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Did you resolve that issue about land use between A1A and the water?
Yeah, we did.
I haven't seen the rewrite on that.
Yeah, so that'll be provided to you. With, I think, things of particular note that came up during the workshops, I'll try to highlight, just to bring them to the forefront.
Okay, so we'll see that next time.
Yes.
Super.
All right, I'll open this up for public comment and the comprehensive plan discussion. All right, seeing none, we'll bring it back. Other items, anything else? Ms. Petito?
No, sir, I don't have anything.
All right, Mr. Moylan, anything you needed to add?
No, Chair.
All right, I'll go back down. I'll open it up for public, open public comment if anybody had anything else. All right, seeing none. Board members, if you wanted to do your board report, now is the time. If you felt you didn't have time before. Commissioner Hanson, anything?
No, sir.
Commissioner Pangton? Commissioner Carney? Commissioner Richardson?
Of course I wrote something.
Okay.
Because I haven't, oh, come on, it's fast. It's really fast, I promise. Great opportunity. Here, I'm cutting half my words in half. Okay, stop it. We had a great trip to Tallahassee to meet with our legislators. It was a wonderful opportunity also to address other legislatures of other rural counties. We got to hear from the, I think, the entire cabinet of, it was three and a half hours, so if they could do it, we could do it, right? Of what they have to say, and I'm very excited for what we have coming. I went to the FC3 meeting where they discussed upcoming events in the community in the coming weeks, and they were able to assist, proudly able to assist the city of Palm Coast with grants from many local nonprofit organizations. It was a very successful turnout with over 15 applications and 14 approved, for a total of over $90,000, approximately $90,000, that the city was offering, and it was accepted 100% by the city. So FC3 is doing what they're supposed to be doing, is leading the way. Last afternoon, I served on the canvassing board, many times, for District 6, happy to be doing that with our great elections office. And went to the Warbird Show in the airport and had a lot of opportunity to meet our constituents, and topped it off with that first drone show of lighting the sky with beautiful vision for our community and county. And they included some of the country stuff. It was really something special to see. If you weren't there, you missed a great opportunity to see the beauty of it. I'm happy to be invited to celebrate Penelope Anderson, Daniel Anderson's daughter, as the editor of the Avion magazine at Emory Riddle University. She asked a handful of us to go, and we were all very proud of this homegrown girl being such a success on her way to college, her next college, her next degree. The last week, I spent time with the Clerk of Courts team, watched some fabulous writing and roping in the Cracker Day, saw Precious Play at the Community Repertory Theater, the events are non-stop, and meeting newly-elected Congressman Randy Fine, the Sheriff's Crime Report, meeting and ribbon-cutting of our newest business of Houndstown's Doggy Daycare Center in Benel's line, county line. Great, great opportunity there. Sunday was filled with joy to be able to anticipate the Autism Festival at European Village, produced by Vincent's Clubhouse and Richmond Center. And these are all people that we are working for, and they are working for our community. And I think it's beautiful to represent them and understand them and respect them for all the efforts they put, big and small. Don't forget, there is a Safe Water Safe event at Belt Air Swim and Racquet Club on Saturday, the 26th, from 10 to 1. It's free. And looking forward for another great event where they have hundreds of people that can't swim, learning how to swim, and assisting in how to survive in water. It's for safety. And that's it. I appreciate the opportunity to give some news out of positive energy. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Nothing for me?
Move with adjourn.
Except for, he just cut me off, so. No, we're good. I don't have anything else to add. We have a motion to adjourn, we're adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for your time today, your discussion. Appreciate it.